Here we go. Hi, everyone. Welcome to the joint meeting for the Rules and Open Government Committee and Committee for the Whole for Wednesday, July 31st. Welcome back, everyone, from the summertime. We have a quorum, because everybody's here on the committee. And we'll begin with a review of the final agenda for August 6th. And we'll start by looking, asking for any changes to pages four and five. I know we've got a national night out, so I imagine everyone will be eager to get on, out to their communities. Pages six and seven. Any changes to pages eight and nine? Pages 10 and 11? Pages 12 and 13? All right. Several members of the community would like to speak. Oh, no. This is on other items. So we'll hold off for now. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Doctor.
All right. Motion from Councilmember Renas. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. All right. We're on now to the final agenda for August 13th. Start with any changes on pages four and five? Six and seven? Pages eight and nine? Pages 10 and 11? Pages 12 and 13? And pages 14 and 15? Pages 16 and 17? Do we want to have a not before for 8.1 and 2? I'm guessing there may be some public interest in that issue. How about a not before 3 o'clock? Be all right?
Mayor, it looks like the two land use items are... Oh, they are, they look like consent.
You are correct.
Do we need to have an evening meeting?
You're invoking the Chappy Jones Rule.
Yep. Ooh, yeah. No, he thinks he...
Okay, good.
Actually, say doctrine. It sounds real more...
The doctrine. The doctrine of...
The doctrine?
They only do that, I think, once you're dead. Yeah, like Monroe. Yeah. Okay. All right. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
On item 4.3 for that day, the multifamily housing bonds. There will be some outside parties here, bond counsel and developers' counsel and other people, and I was wondering if that could be moved up.
It's already indicated as being following land use consent. Oh, I see. It's under land use consent.
But land use consent... But that's after... Okay, so that's, it'll work.
Oh, I see.
That'll work.
Oh, so that's a one... Okay, yeah, so it all works.
All right, okay.
Okay, good. Clerk's office way ahead of us. Okay, good.
Mayor, I didn't, I'm sorry. I didn't notice that we're doing an adjournment. And I, maybe my office should try to put adjournment in memory of Warren Gannon. He was a longtime commissioner.
Sure.
I don't know if we could put that on one of the agendas that's coming up.
We typically want to do it if, when family members and friends are able to...
Yeah. I don't know if anybody's working on it. I just was asking.
Yeah, we are working.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Vice Mayor.
It's appearing on the 6th.
It's on the 6th?
I think so.
It is?
Yep.
I didn't see it, but okay.
Clerk's office always ahead of us. Okay. Great. There was a motion from Councilmember Renas. I didn't hear a second.
Second.
Okay. Any comments from the public? I don't see any cards. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes. We'll move then to the public record. Item E.
Motion to file?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
It's gonna take us a couple of meetings.
Yeah, yeah. We're all getting there. That's all cool. All right, so item G, several consent items. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? G2 is undue concentration criteria update. That is a memorandum from Councilmember Peralas. I don't see anyone from Councilmember Peralas's office. I see David Tran is here. David, did you want to speak at all on this item?
Thank you, Mayor. I will keep my remarks short. Good afternoon. David Tran with the Office of Councilmember Raul Peralas. And thank you for considering this policy proposal. As you have read in our memo, we are seeking to provide more tools for our police department when engaging with ABC regarding new proposed business operations. It looks like staff has greenlit the item, and we hope that you can support this. Thank you.
Okay. Great.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I see the chief is in the back of the room. Chief, do you have anything to say?
Oh, we have questions, Mayor.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you. All right. I am supportive of moving forward, although I will be surprised if there isn't a lot of work anytime it involves downtown and drinking, but...
Yeah, so we've greenlit it with a little bit of a caveat. If we kind of get into it and it's gonna be a lot, we'll have to, we'll have to go to priority setting.
Yeah.
At this point, we're gonna see what we can work out.
Okay, sounds good. Dan Fan? Come on up, Dan. Everyone's got two minutes to speak. Thanks for your recent opening of Minibus.
Yes. So hello, members of the committee. I'm here to voice support for Councilmember Peralas's memo. My name is Dan Fan. I'm part ownership of a group that runs four businesses here in the downtown area. While applying for our SUP last year, actually, we actually ran into this issue where we had the police strongly oppose our project. Fortunately, that was a bit demoralizing after we wanted to spend, you know, we invested about $2 million to an empty store that had been sitting there for about seven to eight years. We went through the proper channels, and we were able to secure the recommendation of the planning department still, even though with the police department stance. I was able to talk to someone at the police department. They did tell me that, you know, based on what the over-concentration rules are at the time, that's the stance they have to take. And they were just, you know, following their policy guidelines at the time. I also want to say that I do support the San Jose Police Department's efforts in creating a safer downtown, but I don't believe that putting a moratorium on ABC licenses is the answer to creating a safer neighborhood. There's less and less retail brick-and-mortar establishments these days because of, you know, Amazon, things like that. So there is a higher demand for restaurants and bars to fill these vacant storefronts. I think we can all agree that we want a more vibrant downtown with more open businesses. Having an occupied storefronts and a dense mix of retail establishments will create a stronger deterrent to crime, we think. And all the while, we will provide jobs for the residents in our city and then tax dollars to city services such as SGA PD and other programs. We understand that SGA PD has concerns when an alcohol establishment opens, but we also know that the conditional and special use permit program exists for this reason. The city lays out conditions and criteria that specify very specific rules for businesses to abide by and to make sure we're not abusing the system and following in the spirit, in the spirit of the cities mentioned, to build a safe and vibrant downtown. What we should be doing, I guess, is making sure that how these SUPs and CUPs are regulated and administered and making sure people are following the rules that are set out by these guidelines. And I hope that, you know, with this proposal, that it makes sure both parties, like civic and the businesses out here, are on the same page about what we need to do to approve these licenses.
Thanks, Dan.
Okay. Thank you.
Nate LeBlanc, followed by Sam Ramirez.
Hello, councilmembers. Good afternoon. My name is Nate LeBlanc. I'm the Business Development Manager for the San Jose Downtown Association, here representing our 2,100 member businesses. Hope you all had a great vacation, if you call it that. So I just wanted to echo some of what Dan said and to just kind of give a little bit of anecdotal evidence that nightlife is a key component of downtown. It's where a lot of people create their first memories of downtown and a huge draw that brings people into our downtown. So this, the way the current policy is set up, it's disincentivizing some of our entrepreneurs from opening their first business and somewhat more crucially, some of them from opening their second or third and really growing as a concern within the downtown and defining our identity. So we support the memo and really would like to thank David and Raul Peralas for putting this forward. I think Raul is in a very key position as a police officer and a council member to be a great person to bring us together on this issue, and we'd like to see the number of licenses that are available for our entrepreneurs expanded, given everything within the CUP and SUP programs that was already mentioned. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Nate. Feel free just to squeeze the hand. I can...
That's welcome. Good afternoon. My name is Sam Ramirez. I currently own the Continental Bar Lounge and Patio in downtown. I'm here kind of echoing the same thing the gentlemen have said before. You know, we're hoping to activate more of downtown seven days a week, so that way the issues that we had in the past aren't there. Whenever our storefront's empty or not activated, we're gonna have these issues. People are gonna come and just hang out. And once our businesses are activated, like mine, 3:30 to 2:00 a.m. seven days a week, I don't have any homeless sleeping in front of the place, no graffiti, thank God, I should knock on wood. But, you know, it just makes more sense. And we're hoping that issues like this come up, that we can somehow help in giving suggestions whether or not it's a good operator to be involved and they would be good operators in the future and just kind of have a sounding board, because I think right now, the issues are being decided by people that aren't really in the industry. And we just, I currently want to just see downtown get better. And so anytime we can help, we'd love to be a part of it. So thank you and have a great day.
Great. Thanks, Sam. Thanks for investing in our city. Okay. Back to the panel. We do have a motion. Is that right from Councilmember Davis?
Um...
Councilmember Camus?
Camus, in a second.
Great. All right. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we move forward. Thank you all.
Mayor?
Yep.
Can I go back to G1?
Councilmember Renas is calling, recalling G1?
I apologize. I was supposed to drop my request for approval for Fall Family Festival since we've already had an approval. I don't know if it would hurt any process...
Does it matter if we've re-approved it?
Double approval.
All right. So re-approved.
Double approved. No approval.
Amen. All right.
We can change our minds, so.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
The Neighborhood Services Education Committee Work Plan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? H4 is the Public Safety Finance Strategic Support Committee Work Plan.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, open forum. We have many members of the community who'd like to speak. Martha O'Connell, followed by, I believe it's Glenna Howcroft, Gary Smith, Lee Elek, Patricia Davis, and Sherman Adams. Oh, excuse me, Mason Fong?
It's fine. I was on G2.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just saw the card and it was in... I missed... Forgive me, Mason.
You got it.
Thanks for your patience. I simply, it was out of order and I didn't see it. My apologies. Okay. Welcome, Martha.
I've ordered a powerpoint that we sent to you a little bit ago that you're gonna use.
Okay, great.
Okay, it was my fault. I didn't realize that we couldn't just give her a thumb drive. So it's on your computer.
Okay.
But Glenna is also going to hold it up. So the first page, "Mobile Home Parks in San Jose: The Impact of the Homeless and a Solution," presented by Ryan Jazinski and Martha O'Connell. Mobile home parks are being impacted by fire danger, blight, and crime. Next page, Glenna.
My thanks.
On July 11th, a fire started in a homeless encampment across the street from Colonial Mobile Manor in D9. A mobile home can burn in four to five minutes. Mobile homes burn faster than conventional housing. Next page. The encampment was between the sound wall and the cyclone fence which had been cut to allow complete access to the homeless. This situation had been reported for at least five months. Calls were made to the city and Caltrans. The encampment was not abated. Next page, Glenna. While putting out the fire on July 11th, firefighters threw debris from the encampment onto the sidewalk across the street from Colonial Mobile Manor. One driver had to slam on their brakes as the items came sailing over the cyclone fence into Navarez Avenue, which was being used by traffic at the time. The debris was left on the sidewalk. Following the fire on July 16th, a resident of Colonial Mobile Manor entered the encampment directly across the street from the senior park and took a shocking series of photos. This encampment had been hidden from the eye by vegetation.
Thank you, Martha.
This encampment, hidden from view, gave a bird's-eye view of Colonial Mobile Manor. Anyone in the encampment could watch the seniors coming and going. The resident taking the photos turned back when she spotted a tarp behind which she had reasonable cause to believe there were homeless. She was afraid for her safety. Regarding crime, on and about 6/10/2019, two of the homeless moved from the sound wall encampment and set up rights outside Colonial... Sorry, right outside Colonial Mobile Manor, sleeping against the park wall behind the bush. Using the reasonable person standard, they appeared to be under the influence of drugs. One of them trespassed into the park and wandered around. Both park residents and the manager called the city and the police. No help was forthcoming, so the bush of the homeless were using to tether their tarp was cut down and the area flooded. Hypodermic needles were found in the trash left by the homeless.
Good afternoon. For months, bikes of residents in Colonial Mobile Manor had been stolen. When the encampment was abated and articles tossed over the fence by the firefighters, there were numerous bikes and bike parts. Hard to see in the photo, but they are dangling from the cyclone fence. More was shown earlier in this presentation in the photos taken inside the actual encampment. In or about late March 2019, two fires were set by a homeless man outside Peppery Estates. He uses cardboard and wooden pallets to repeatedly build a house by the discontinued railroad tracks directly outside the park. The fires were set when he was cooking outside his house. He fled the scene on both occasions and did not come back until the fires were out. Unfortunately, no photos were, are available of the fire, which was within 40 feet of a mobile home. This photo shows the location of a portion of the tracks taken through the fence between the park and the tracks. In July 20, July 20th, 2019, beginning of a homeless encampment in the tracks area over the fence shown is, in the photo, is Peppery Estates. In 2013, a homeless encampment was set up on the creek side of Colonial Manor, Mobile Manor, less than 500 feet from a preschool. It took months and months for abatement, and that came only after a presentation to the Rules Committee. Needles and empty bottles of alcohol were found. During this time, homeless persons even broke into the sauna room to take the showers, use the showers.
Okay.
I'm good. I'm fine. Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Patricia Davis. I'm the Assistant Director on the Property Management Team at Brandonberg, Stether &amp; Moore, and I'd like to speak to you about three of your...
Ma'am, I don't think so. I think I called the other names of the individuals first.
I'm sorry.
Is that right?
I'm sorry.
Is that, is that, is that the order you had? Okay, forgive me. I'm sorry, Patricia, go ahead. Please forgive me for interrupting.
So I'd like to speak with you about three of our communities that are continually impacted by the homeless issue. The first set of photos you see there are from our Quail Hollow community. We've been battling the removal of this homeless man who has occupied the same space on the border of our community for over a year. We've called the City of San Jose numerous times. We've sent countless emails to the San Jose homeless team, and we've even called the police. The single-family homeowners around our community have exhausted the same resources. And so now they're calling our office, saying, "We must have this gentleman removed." And of course, the cycle continues, calling and emailing with no resolution. The second group of pictures are from our Mill Pond community, which is bordered by Curtner Avenue. There is an encampment there that's been an ongoing problem for our residents and management. And last year, the city came to clean up, and the homeless individuals leave countless hypodermic needles, tons of trash, and they regularly light small fires to cook. The last group of photos shows how cooking fires affected our Spanish Cove community in June of 2018. This fire was also set by the homeless directly over the fence bordering their yards. The fire came dangerously close to our tenants' homes, and they resorted to using their garden hoses to fight this fire and ensure that their homes and their families were not in danger. And this is what we're facing. A big mess is not the worst thing that can happen to a mobile home community when the homeless reside alongside it, and we need some help.
Thank you, Patricia. Welcome.
Thank you for taking the time to listen. My name's Ryan Jazinski. I work with Brandonberg, Stether &amp; Moore. A solution that, you know, we've come with, the City of San Jose must coordinate with all jurisdictions, such as Caltrans and various other organizations, to address the impact of homelessness on mobile home communities. It's not sufficient to continue to say, "This is not our jurisdiction." If the city categorizes mobile home communities as affordable housing, then they can't afford to lose the housing due to inaction to the hazards that are close to our communities. Our residents, their homes, and our communities are all in jeopardy, and we need your assistance. Furthermore, mobile home communities are more vulnerable than single-family home neighborhoods. We know that when homelessness increases in areas, so does crime. And a majority of our communities are older persons' communities, which is a generally targeted class. You know, also in addition, due to the density of the mobile homes, fire presents a unique danger. Not only does the close proximity of these homes increase the likelihood of fire spreading quickly throughout the communities, but mobile homes also burn faster than single-family homes, and that puts lives at risk. And you saw from our Spanish Cove fire how quickly things can change. We understand that the city's working diligently to find solutions and to bring the homeless challenges presented today and to find solutions for those. I hope that this presentation today brings awareness about the danger of the situation presented to mobile home communities and the residents that live within them.
Thank you. And forgive me, I believe, Sherman Adams? Followed by Brock Cavani.
One of the things I try to deal with every Saturday is when I go somewhere and try to go to a store, we're getting hit by bums and panhandlers and homeless people. We know we've got a problem. And we want, everybody wants to take care of them, but we all can't save the entire world. So I'm gonna give you a personal perspective as a Wilter and a resident of Quail Hollow Mobile Home Park. Now, we've heard about fires around the area. I have actually sawn two. One by Lost Grattis Creek across Burrell Avenue from Quail Hollow within the last three weeks, where I work over there off Almeden and Kell. There's a homeless encampment over there that gets moved out constantly. They've had, they had a fire last, they're, they're about two weeks ago. And we have a gentleman who lives and camps out on the west, on the south side of Quail Hollow Mobile Home Park. He's got his canvas attached to the fence. He's there every day. He's been there for months. And I know people, when you see open house signs and people have a large amount of investments, and I'm sure all you do here in San Jose, you've got a very short number of seconds to make a first impression when you sell a home. And when you see this guy out there and the other ones, it definitely affects the value of your property and could make it a lot more difficult to sell. Now, I don't have the answer. The way I understand San Jose, we don't have any panhandling laws. Maybe we should, but something's got to be done with these people. Because on Burrell Avenue, several times a week, it looks like a car lot for sale where people are pulling in and living in their old RVs, their cars and everything. You see them sleeping in there. So we need your help. We need something to happen that's gonna get these people the help and get them out of our neighborhoods, because they are dangerous. Thank you.
Thank you. Brooke?
Councilmembers, Brock Cavani, as of July 22nd...
I'm sorry, Brock. Forgive me.
I'm sorry.
I called you Brooke. My apologies.
No worries. Brock Cavani, as of July 22nd, I'm the new owner of San Jose Mobile Home and RV Park, formerly Mobile Home Manor. Operate 80 mobile home and RV parks throughout California and a few other states. This is a, really a health and safety issue when it comes down to a fire. We lost two Mobile Home Parks 100 spaces in the Paradise Fires, almost lost, you know, another 50 spaces in Redding earlier in that year. You know, on top of that, you know, being here three or four days at the community, I've had the same group of people come into the community, bathe, you know, using, going onto people's property, bathing using their faucets in the mobile home park and getting naked, showing things that should not be shown where there are children around. So, you know, it'd be nice, you know, I don't know, I'm kind of new here, I grew up, but it'd be nice to know who I can reach out to to help to resolve these issues, because, you know, as a property owner, we're limited. You know, we want to take care of our residents. I think you want us to take care of our residents, so, yeah, I look forward to hearing some other solutions. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I know this is an open forum, and it's not really for... I'm sorry, Lee, did you have a card? Forgive me. Come on up, Lee. Apologies. I didn't, I must not have read it.
Yeah, this was a picture of the Colonial Manor, or Mobile Home, and within three days, the shopping carts galore. And I thought there was law against using shopping carts to take anywhere. But I just wanted to say, for health and safety, it's a big issue. My mobile home parks not even mentioned, but Chateau La Salle, we have 435. We've had the homeless jump over our back fence, defecate in the shower by the swimming pool, jump in the jacuzzi and use it for a bath. It's been a constant problem. We had to redo all the locks on all the showers and all the bathrooms. It's a big issue for us. The health and safety issue also. I'm walking the street just outside Umbarger, and a guy come up to me with a knife and don't know what language. He was just guttural, just sounds and groaning, and it... So, whoa, you have to back off. So, health and safety, big issue. I just came from the VA emergency room. I was up 19 times with pain, but this is so important, I didn't want to be a fair-weather friend or a fair-weather warrior. This is an important issue, probably across many parks, but there's only a few that are organized that will come up here and speak. Yes, yeah, I think that's it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Lee. Hope you feel better soon. This is just public comment, so this isn't an item for council discussion, but first I just want to ask our city manager to say a few words about who to contact. And then, secondly, appreciate the solution that was proffered about ensuring that we are coordinating with other jurisdictions such as Caltrans, and I'd add to that VTA and UP Railroad and others. I want to assure you, I don't think there's a single person on this panel, this committee, who hasn't themselves reached out to those agencies and their staff's reached out to those agencies. So there's no lack of efforts to coordinate. There's simply a challenge in terms of who makes decisions and when that gets done. Dave, did you want to respond?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. I mean, there's so much to, that could be said on this subject and certainly nothing that I'm gonna say is gonna really necessarily solve the issue and certainly appreciate everything you're going through and recognize that, you know, it shouldn't be that way. So we're doing as much as we possibly can to work through the issue of managing homelessness in our city. And it's an issue that is affecting certainly a great deal of our community. And I can tell you, in many cases, is completely overwhelming the city resources that we have available to deal with this. Certainly, if you feel in danger, you need to call 911. And in that situation, we will be there. I guarantee you that. You know, on these other issues, certainly around quality of life and trash and the encampments, much more challenging for us to deal with. We are doing a tremendous amount of abatements every year. And we've reported to the council and kind of our activity levels around that. And I do recognize that that doesn't necessarily, you know, make you feel better about kind of what's going on in your particular neighborhood. But certainly, you do need to report these, these, these things. It is to our Housing Department, and we will do the best to follow up on these things. Certainly don't want you to think that, you know, we want you to just kind of be quiet and put up with it. That's not what we're asking you to do, but we do recognize that, you know, we're not always able to kind of get out there right away and address the situations. I do think the council is fully aware of this and understand it. Until we have enough housing for all of our residents in the city, when we do an abatement, in essence, we're just, we're just moving the problem around the city. That's all we're doing. Because when we do an abatement, they're just moving to a different part of our city. And often, they're re-encamping the areas that we've just cleaned up. So I wish there's more I could say to you that would kind of provide an immediate solution. But I do share your concern and appreciate what you're going through. And I do want you calling in and making sure we're aware of what's going on. And like I said at the beginning, if there is somebody that's doing something that you feel unsafe, you do need to call 911 and make that call, please.
All right, this will be, I know, a topic of continued discussion at the council as we try to do whatever we can about this crisis. For now, the meeting is adjourned, but I appreciate the.
So I just have a quick suggestion. I have been.
I think we'll abide by the city attorneys of management, then.
It's not open for discussion. It's only open for questions and clarification. Sorry.
Well, I do have a question.
Okay.
So I've actually had people very scared of fires happening behind their homes. I have a lot of people, actually, that's just outside my district, but I get calls from there occasionally. I also get calls off of Monterey Road, where people have started numerous fires near the UP railroad tracks. I know that we have now some kind of agreement. What kind of effort can the fire department make on getting rid of people who are actually causing fires?
Okay, we're not gonna have any discussion if the question was asked.
Okay.
Right.
That's the question that I have.
All right, thank you.